Is Will in this meeting yet? Will, are you with us? Let me go check with him.
Kathy? Hi. Can we talk a few minutes at the end? I think I'm supposed to connect with you.
Yes, absolutely. That'd be great.
Okay.
Maryland Library says that should work.
Oh, the one that was up?
Yeah, that should work.
Joan?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Did you want to go first, or did we want to go in the order of the report?
Just go in order of the report.
Okay, perfect.
Makes it easier.
Perfect. Okay, just to make sure.
Okay, for everyone that's in the meeting right now, the meeting is now streaming. It's on YouTube. So... And Skip, I'm showing 23 people in the meeting right now.
Okay, thank you, Rudy. Our board chair, Will Shorter, is dialing in now. He's going to be dialing in through his phone because of the the internet outage here at our headquarters building. So he'll be here in just a minute.
I got hit by the tornado the other day.
Oh, my goodness.
Fortunately, it wasn't destructive too much. Lost a tree.
Wow.
Which was, you know, just feet away from where I was sitting, so.
Hmm. Thank goodness you weren't hurt.
Yeah, right.
The tornado went through Hillsmere, and I got a tree down, a huge tree down as well, to the tune of $1,500. So it did go through Hillsmere. It went on its way against the Bay Ridge through Hillsmere, and I was lucky because half the tree went on top of my neighbor's house, and half of it went on the power line. My half of it went on the power line. The other half of the tree, which was on the border, went on their property and went over the roof. So it was pretty wild in Hillsmere on that day. Yep.
Yeah, I'll tell you one that's really strange. Well, I was sitting on the couch when all this was happening, and I just thought, you know, I knew the tornado was here. I saw it. But I didn't think it was anywhere close to me. But I'm sitting on the couch, and my doorbell starts to ring. So I got up and I went to the door, and obviously, there was no one there. So I went back, sat on the couch again. Doorbell rang again. So I went back to the door. No one there. So I then the doorbell started to ring continuously for a while, and then it stopped. Well, I didn't really think anything more about it. I didn't know I had damage until last Sunday, when I was out on my deck with my family for a family brunch, and we looked over we looked over the side of the rail, and here's this tree down.
Hello?
Hey, Will.
Hi. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect. All right. I am sorry that I am running late. I was experiencing some technical difficulties. It is 4:06, and I will call the Anarond County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. Today is September 17th. I will start with the roll call. My name is William Shorter, and I'm chairman of the Board of Trustees. Is Joyce Miller, First Vice Chair, on the line? I see Joyce on the line.
I'm here, Will. Joyce is here.
Joyce is present. Rob Satz, Second Vice Chairman.
I'm present as well.
Deidre Hendrick?
Present.
Treasurer and Barbara Maxwell, Secretary? Barbara Maxwell on the line. I'm trying to see if I see Barbara.
I'm going to give her a call. We were meeting earlier today. I'll call her just to see if she's having any difficulty.
Okay. At the moment, she is not. Mr. Jim Eastup? I do not see Jim. Ms. Penny Evans?
She's there. I see Penny on iPad Pro.
Oh, okay, I see her. Thank you. Ms. Simona Simmons?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Leslie Anderson informed me that she cannot attend today's meeting. Tanya Bryan? I believe I saw Tanya here.
Burudie, yes, present.
I'm sorry, Burudie. Ms. Joan Beck?
Present.
And Kathy Black?
Here.
Mr. Joseph Bless?
Present.
I see Joe. And I know Ms. Laura Brown is here. Mr. Don Rowland. Jacqueline Seaman could not make it today. Ms. Jenny Lane Smith is present. Ms. Sandra Solomon. I do not see her unless she has a different name. Is Ms. Solomon here? Ms. Solomon is not here. And Mr. Gerald Starr I see as present, if I am not mistaken. And also, we have our two candidates that were approved by the Anarond County Council. One of them, Dallas, is also on our call today, and they will be formally confirmed by this body later on in the meeting today. So thank you for joining us as well. And let me start off the meeting with recognizing two individuals who are leaving our organization. And these two individuals have been two strong partners that have really helped guide this organization through some really, you know, some tough times and really helped us propel ourselves to the next level. And the first person I'd like to recognize is Anne Glenn. And on behalf of the board, we would like to present Anne Glenn with a citation that reads, "Certification of appreciation is awarded to Anne E. Glenn in recognition of your dedication to the Anarond County Public Library over the last six years, with our deepest gratitude for for service as Executive Director of the foundation. Under your leadership, the Library Foundation has soared to new heights. The more than $3.1 billion you have helped raise will benefit our library system for decades to come. For all of your accomplishments and for your service to our county, we are truly thankful and wish you the best of luck in retirement." Sign, William A. Shorter, Jr., Anarond County Public Library Board of Trustees Chairman, and Skip Ald, Anarond County Public Library Chief Executive Officer. And I will invite Skip to read a citation from the county executive, and then I'll share a couple remarks.
Okay, and just here's what it looks like. Anne, we'll hand that over to you later. This is from Anarond County, Maryland, executive citation. "The citizens of Anarond County, Maryland salute Anne Glenn in recognition of six years of dedicated and outstanding public service to Anarond County Public Library as the Executive Director of the AACPL Foundation. Your contributions stand on their own merit and serve as a record of your unwavering commitment to making Anarond County Public Libraries the library system of choice, providing the highest quality services to Anarond County citizens. We extend to you our sincere appreciation and best wishes upon your retirement. Thank you for helping to make Anarond County the best place for all." Stuart L. Pittman, County Executive, September 17, 2020. Would you like to say a few words, Anne?
I am very, very grateful for those citations, and I can't say enough positive things about this organization, the staff that I've had the pleasure to work with, and the volunteers on the foundation board, and the trustees on the library board have been unfailingly supportive of everything I've tried to do and have happily and gladly taken part in the foundation's activities and generously supported us. The foundation would never have had the success it's had without the commitment of the trustees, and of course, the foundation board to making the foundation able to do the things that it's been able to do. So I thank each of you for your commitment to this wonderful organization, which is so important in our county, as you all know. Thank you.
And also, I would say to Anne, thank you very much for your professionalism and your poise. Ever since joining the board, I can always count on you for your guidance on so many different issues and always looking for your wisdom and your experiences with on how to retain donors and how to always make sure that the library has friends. So I thank you for that. But I would definitely like to call on if Don Rowland or Joan Beck as the two past chairs and leaders of the board in particular, if you guys would like to say anything, not to put you on the spot, but if you guys want to say anything as the leaders of the board and who I've worked with, and if you guys want to say anything in particular, please feel free to do so. Or if anyone else briefly.
Yes, I would love to say to Anne that I've been on many organizations through the years. You are far and away the best Executive Director I've ever seen, the best at fundraising, the most professional. I just can't say enough about the job you've done for the Library Foundation and for the library. And so my deepest thanks for all the hard work you've done. I know you and your team are amazing, but you need to know, not everybody is what you are.
Yeah, Elaine, that means a great deal to me coming from you, particularly because I know you've had a lot of experience. So thank you for that. I won't forget your words. Thank you.
I started my work with the Annapolis Library or with the Anarond County Library System on the foundation from its inception, and I can tell you that we struggled in those early years to find a direction, to find a way in which we could really have a material impact. And it wasn't until Anne joined that it really all came together. And Anne provided outstanding leadership, direction, and has shown the way to have the foundation be the excellence that it is today. So we're going to miss you, Anne. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, Don. Same here. And coming from you, as someone with your great experience and your deep devotion to this institution, it means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
Anne, I'd just like to say a word because you know, I have been in on the birth throes of starting a foundation with people who really didn't know how to start a foundation, if you want to know the truth. We all, the problem was that we all knew we didn't know how to start a foundation. Unfortunately, we found you, and you have taught us much. You have led us to certainly a different level, and we are all in your debt, as are the citizens of our county. I thank you, Anne, for your dedication and service.
Thank you, Joan. You were always there beside me.
Tried to be.
Sharing us on, so you helped make it possible. Thank you.
Okay, so Will, I think you want me to go next because we have another person who's been extremely valuable to this organization, and I have a certificate of appreciation that we will get to Scott Sedmak, but I would like to read this. And there is also an executive citation that you have from the county executive. So this certificate of appreciation is awarded to Scott A. Sedmak in recognition of your commitment to the Anarond County Public Library over the last 23 years. With our deep appreciation for your steadfast service as Chief Financial Officer, your sage advice and dedication to financial responsibility have kept the library on a steady course for the future. With special recognition for your commitment to building a robust catalog of library materials, for all your accomplishments and for your service to our county, we are truly grateful and wish you the best of luck in your retirement. Presented this 17th day of September 2020, William A. Shorter, Jr., AACPL Board of Trustees Chairman, and Skip Ald, AACPL CEO. And Will, I believe you have a citation to read.
Yes. Anarond County, Maryland, executive citation. "The citizens of Anarond County, Maryland salute Scott A. Sedmak in recognition of 23 years of dedicated and outstanding public service to Anarond County Public Library as the Chief Financial Officer. Your contributions stand on their own merit and serve as a record of your unwavering commitment to making Anarond County Public Libraries the library system of choice, providing the highest quality of services to Anarond County citizens. We extend to you our sincere appreciation and best wishes upon your retirement. Thank you for helping to make Anarond County the best place for all." Stuart L. Pittman, County Executive, September 17, 2020. And Scott, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for being part of really much the history of Anarond County Public Libraries. When you think about it, we are approaching our 100th anniversary as a library system, and you've been part of so much of that history, and and you've really helped develop so much of what we are today. So I applaud you for all of your hard work and dedication. And again, if and particularly, if anyone wants to share anything briefly, particularly Joan and Don as the leaders of the board, if you want to share anything briefly, please feel free to do so.
I'd just like to say thank you, Scott. It's always been a joy to work with you. Now, we have a special, when you talk about the materials budget, we could tell a story, the both of us, that would make you all chuckle. But we'll leave that for another day. I thank you for all you've done, keeping us on the right path, making sure we didn't all end up in a mess. Thank you, Scott, and I appreciate working with such a nice man.
Soon after joining the board, I became treasurer, and boy, did Scott help me out. I was at a loss for how to go about what I needed to do. I didn't understand all the intricacies of working with the county, and Scott was just a guiding light. I also saw him as a real fighter for the people of all of the people at the library, all of the constituents, including the employees and the patrons of the library. Scott, we're going to miss you.
Thank you. And Scott, would you like to say anything?
There, I was muted there for a minute. You know, once again...
I thought you retired early.
I'm still here. I'm still here. And this is still water. But very difficult, although, you know, I saw what when Anne made her decision to retire before I did, I said, well, you know, that seems like a great idea, so I'll follow her. But after her very eloquent thanks that she just gave to all the trustees and to the to the whole Anarond County community, I find it very, very difficult to follow her. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for their kind words, those that have been expressed today, and those have been expressed privately. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you, and I wish you all personal and professional success as we move forward. Stay well.
And you as well.
Thank you.
Let's tell some of those stories. Now, I guess we're on YouTube, so we won't do that.
Skip, is there anything you want to add before I get down to business?
Just thank you, Anne and Scott. You're still here for two more weeks, so let's work like, let's put in 80-hour work weeks the next couple of weeks. What do you say? I guess not. Okay. Thank you.
To just mention that I am now a DC resident, and therefore, I just sent a letter of resignation to Skip and Will, sorry. And so I miss you guys, and I'm just here to say goodbye. So thank you all for a wonderful experience.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that...
Good, whoa. Jim, I just wanted to say...
Oh, I think Jim is gone.
Jim is gone. Okay.
Yes, that was his farewell address. With that, I'll seek approval to to approve the agenda with one exception. We have to move the approval of the closed meeting minutes to the closed session. So with those exceptions, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
Still move.
Joyce moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Joan seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair.
Deidra?
Yes, I'm sorry. Do we have, are we voting on a replacement treasurer at this meeting? I don't see it on the agenda, and I will no longer be treasurer after the vote at 4:10. The board will be without a treasurer.
Chair of the Governance Committee, would you feel comfortable with voting?
Excuse me. Is that, okay, I'm sorry. That is a vote of the board, so we could, yeah, we could put that onto the agenda.
Would you be okay with that, Governance Chair?
Yes, indeed. I'm perfectly...
And what about the secretary?
That too.
Okay. Just for clarification, under Governance Committee report...
Excuse me. I was muted. Yes, I'm fine with that. This is Barbara.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Brown, I'm seeing thumbs up if you're all right with that as well. We will have election of the treasurer, and if the election of the treasurer is approved, then we'll have election of a new secretary under the Governance Committee report. So if there's no objection with that, I'll call for a vote for the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The agenda is approved. I ask for consent on all of the approval of the minutes besides the closed meeting minutes that we're going to move to close. Do I hear a motion to move to approve the minutes? Joyce? Makes the motion. Mr. Bless seconds it. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion carries. The minutes are approved. And one last time, Ms. Hendrick will present the treasurer report, and let me just say thank you so much for all of your hard work as treasurer over the past year. It was really a pleasure serving with you. So I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and it's been a pleasure serving as the treasurer. When I came on the board, June of last year, I had no expectation I would be an officer with some significant responsibilities only a few months later. So it's been, and I want to make a personal thank you to Scott for his help in bringing me up to speed and for taking care of so many things that, you know, there's really, the treasurer's report is, see the attachments that the CFO has included and ask me if you have any questions, and I'll refer them to Scott. So I mean, that's what it is every month, pretty much. So that is, my report is, the documents are included in your packet, which are the, as of June, prepared by Scott. If anybody has any questions about those, I'll entertain those at this time. And I also want to note that the recruitment is out for the replacement for the new CFO. And I believe, Skip, you said the 28th is the closing date for the applications. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. September 28th.
Thank you.
And then we would expect to do select candidates to interview in early October, and we hope to have a new CFO onboard in early November.
All right, excellent. So subjectively questions on my report, that is my final action on the board. I guess, other than voting for my replacement to be added to the board.
With that, yes, and thank you once again. Now, with that, Governance Committee, Ms. Smith, the election of the new members?
Okay, we have a slate of treasurer and secretary. Barbara Maxwell has agreed to be...
Two new members, the members first, madam?
Oh, two new members first, sorry. Brooke and Daleks are up for membership, and they've been approved by the county council, and they have impressed the Governance Committee with their commitment. So I would like to propose that we vote for those two. Is that good enough, Will? Or do I have to be more formal?
I don't believe so, since it's a report coming from the committee.
If that's a motion, I second.
Thank you, Joan.
Yeah, it doesn't require a second because it's coming from a committee.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that, Deidra. All in favor of our two new members? Please raise your hands.
The motion carries?
Yep.
And congratulations to our two new trustees.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And on to the election of the new treasurer.
Okay, Barbara Maxwell.
Excuse me just a moment. May I just ask, I see that we have four of the trustees who do not have their cameras on, and therefore, if they are raising their hands, we cannot see them. on and therefore if they are raising their hands, we cannot see them. I don't know if they can turn their cameras on.
And I'm going to mute my camera, turn off my camera now, since I can no longer vote.
Okay.
Okay, it may be that they, they don't have the ability to turn on the cameras.
Yeah, and if, if you don't have the ability, please, yeah, raise your, use the feature to raise your hand or type in the box if you're having technical difficulties, just so we can make sure that we're recording the accuracy of the votes, particularly once we get to the closed meeting.
I see Dr. Sapp said he was not able to turn his camera on, so that, okay, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes. What am I doing?
So the election, the elections that we approved.
For treasurer.
Barbara Maxwell and for secretary Laura Brown. You did get my text.
By the formality, we have to do treasurer first and then, once treasurer, the secretary's office becomes vacant.
True.
Okay, so first, we'll vote on Barbara Maxwell as treasurer. So all in favor of Barbara, and you all will say yes. Raise your hands, please.
The vote carries, it looks like.
So Barbara, God bless you. Okay, for secretary Laura Brown, all in favor, please raise your hand.
The motion carries?
Okay.
And that concludes the Governance Committee Report?
It does.
Thank you very, and thank you very much for your first committed report as chair.
You're quite welcome.
And also to the foundation report, I will turn it over to the first vice chair, Joyce Miller and past president Joan Beck. And also, I would like to thank them for their continuous service on the foundation board as our reps. And going forward, they will provide the foundation board report to this body. So I will turn it over to Ms. Miller and Ms. Beck.
Thank you. Joan and I are going to share the report and so I'm going to do part of it and she's going to do part of it. We're going to volley back and forth a little bit. These are the points that the foundation asked us to make at our board meeting. This was the new, the new foundation board president Chuck Farrar's first meeting in his new position and also the first meeting with our new vice president Karen Smith. We had our meeting on Tuesday. Joan, do you want to talk about happenings now?
Yeah, something really special, I think, is going to become an initiative of the foundation. And I am so thrilled to speak about this because it's an issue that the board has had on its wishlist forever and tried to get into its budget on a number of occasions unsuccessfully. But the board, the foundation board has decided to take the initiative to grant up to $65,000 to fund a pilot program of mailing out Happenings, our magazine, to every household in the county. The mailing will take place with one of the upcoming issues. Happenings is our best tool as far as communication with everybody in the community. It's, it's just the best thing that we could do right now, especially at this difficult time. So Simona, you know, we've talked about this for years and I'm sure you're as thrilled about it as I am.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Joan. I'm going to continue and I'll be very brief. I'm just going to read the rest of the points that they want us to make. The foundation vice chair Karen Smith, who is serving as co-chair along with Christine Feldman of the library's 100th anniversary committee, gave an update on the committee's membership and overview of plans it's considering for the year-long celebration beginning in January of 2021. Another point is a new library foundation committee, the stewardship committee, was recognized and foundation director and secretary Trish Stratt is named its first chair. The committee will be responsible for developing ways for the foundation to honor and keep informed current donors, particularly leadership donors. And lastly, Trish Stratt announced that current and former foundation directors and library trustees, staff and library friends had contributed over $8,200 to the foundation to honor the retirement of Ann Glenn as executive director. A plaque honoring, a plaque recognizing Ann's service to the foundation will be placed in the Samuel and Donna Brown family community living room in the Annapolis branch, recognizing Ann. And that's the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joan or Joyce? Hearing none, we will move on to the strategic plan overview. Ms. Al.
Okay, thank you, Will. And to all of, all of the trustees, and again, welcome Daleks, Daleks and Brooke as new trustees, your, your first, your first meeting. It's really great to have you onboard. And I also want to thank Barbara and Laura for taking on these two new officer positions, really appreciate that. So just wanted to give you an overview of the strategic plan and then each month we'll talk about one of the goals. That's been an idea that, that Will had in order for us to really get to some meaty discussions and understanding on the part of the board. So I want to give a little overview and then I'll call on some of our executive team to talk about some of the specific goals. I would like to share my screen if I have that ability to do that. Let's see. Okay, so these are the, these are the five goals of the plan. The plan had a lot of context and I just want to, to show you what they are right here. Better collections and better access, thriving minds, tailored services, entrepreneurial staff and effective partnerships. And the, I think the thing, that, that's really all I wanted to do on the sharing, so let me do the stop sharing and just talk through some of this with you. The plan is not a traditional plan and wasn't really meant to be one of those plans that would have very specific objectives and, and timelines and, and measures that would get us. It is meant more as a framework for, for making sure we focus on what is important in order to meet the needs of the community. We have found, especially during this pandemic, that the framework helped us to really address the needs in a tremendously focused way to pivot our service. It was a gigantic pivot to reinvent library services. Practically all our services have been reinvented over the last six months. And so the framework that we had, we were able to, to be so effective in part because of this strategic framework, keeping these five goals always in mind. I think especially the, the idea of tailoring services and the idea of our entrepreneurial staff. For, for those pieces of this, I think that's why we were able to move so quickly, even while we were closed between March 13th and June 1st, when all of our staff came back, we were able to really, right away, start doing virtual programming. Right after March the 13th, we, we got those up and running and we're doing those daily. And the staff, the staff of this organization are what made this all happen. This is a plan that allows us to be innovative, creative, nimble, agile and, and completely focused on meeting the needs of our community. I want to mention just a few things before I'll ask on a couple of our executive team to speak. But it gave us, this plan, this framework or this plan gave us an overarching view of how, how we can stay relevant to our community. That's been so important. And I'll remind you that even though we've had some people not so happy with the fact that we went to our curbside plus model after we were reopened between July the 8th and August the 14th, we still have more service that we're being, we're providing to our community than any other library system in Maryland. I think that, that that's because of the focus and the way we've, we, we scaled things back and went to the appointment model and each branch is able to do that in a very, in a very tailored way to their own, to their own branch and their own communities. But we can, we're able to, we, it's, it's really, we, like I said, we've changed the entire service model. We adapted quickly. We really were making things up as we went along. We, we were on a daily basis thinking through, well, what do we need to do in order to do this with, with the collections, with, with everything? It has, okay, so it's kept us focused. It's, another thing that it has done is to reinforce the need for us to, to work closely with our partners. And we especially have deepened and strengthened our connections with the health and human service agencies that are so critical in these times. So with that, what I want to do is turn to Kathy first to talk about the entrepreneurial staff and tailored services. And then I'm going to ask Christine to talk about partnerships, Rudy to talk about collections. And I think Kathy maybe will talk about thriving minds as well. So with that, Kathy, could I get you to, to go first? Thank you.
Sure. Hi, everyone. So as Skip said, we were reviewing this yesterday and it's just, it's quite amazing actually how the strategic plan aligns with what we've had to do to respond to this public health crisis. I'll just give you a couple of brief examples. Under tailored services, one of the bullets says, "We provide the same core services through every branch and platform and allow flexibility for branch staff to adjust for local needs." So what we have is system-wide curbside hours where everybody is offering curbside hours. Everybody is offering appointments. Everybody is offering the opportunity for customers to be able to come in and browse to use the computers and to get help from a library staff member. But they're doing it in the ways that respond to the local needs. So for instance, Catherine McNamara, Brooklyn Park, felt that she knew that her customers needed to be able to just walk up and knock on the door and get the help that they needed. A lot of them don't have cell phones. They may not be able to plan ahead because the, the things they're looking for at the library are needed that day. So that was her plan for her branch and she was able to put that right away into practice as soon as we went to this new model of service. Severna Park has been just flooded with curbside, really, really busy with the materials. That's what their customers want the most and needed right away. So they are putting their emphasis on that and then carving out hours in between for people to come in and select their items to get the help on the computers. And those are just two examples. There, it's everything in between, but each branch is looking at, okay, what does my customer want? What do they need? How can they get it? And how can we provide it? What staff do we have to do it? What hours will be best? And so I'm really proud of the staff and how they've worked together to make that happen and it fits right in with our tailored services. So that leads us to entrepreneurial staff responding to what the customers need, talking to them. They put a plan together and even, this is just our second week, they're already tweaking a little bit. What's working? What's not working? What do we need to add? I was at Mountain Road this morning and they said it's going really well in the afternoon. Some customers are already asking for some morning appointments and they're looking at how they can fit that in. So responding to what the customers are asking for. The thriving minds, I think my best example of that is just the early literacy programs that we're doing on Facebook Live. We've been doing them every day of the week since we transferred to the closed model and then the partial open, back and forth, consistently doing that. And we have a schedule now going through February for every day, one early literacy program done by staff throughout, throughout the system. So those are just some examples of how what we're doing fits right into our plan.
I'll jump in and talk a little bit about partnerships. Obviously, over the last few years, we have exploded with our partnerships across the county, whether it be county agencies, daycare centers, nonprofit organizations. And that has continued and I would argue probably grown in importance while we have been dealing with COVID. I just wanted to share two small examples of what we've been doing to build effective partnerships during this time of COVID. First, we were approached by the county's chief of staff and some of the other high-level executives about how we could help families who were trying to assist their children who were e-learning earlier in the school year, you know, in the, in the last school year. And these, these families were very stressed out, felt like they had no, no place to go to get help. And so we developed a cheat sheet of a very simple, all free resources that the library offers that can help support these families. And we specifically tailored it to working families and our county employees. We were able to take that cheat sheet and work with our partners at the Annapolis County Public Schools and participate in their meal distribution sites, of which at the time there were roughly 60 of those. And we handed out those cheat sheet flyers to all the families coming to pick up food. And that was a real lifesaver to people who were struggling to help their students. So those are just two small examples of what we've been doing through our partnerships to help families and to make sure people have the resources that the library has to offer.
So I'll jump in real quick now. With better collections and better access. So some things are not going to change. The library's collection, the library's books, resources, materials, still remains our core services. But what made the strategic plan such a vital part of our success in these, in responding to the COVID, again, was, and, and we have to emphasize this over and over again, there's an underlying connection that brings all these elements together. The idea that we are fostering a new way of, of performing library, of doing library through our entrepreneurial staff, that staff feel empowered and aware and are able to make changes quickly without having, while at the same time keeping true to the library's overall goals, knowing what, what our community needs and being able to respond quickly to these changes. So within a week after our services were shut down, Judy Poyer and the materials management team managed to pivot the entire funding scheme for the, the library's materials into eBooks and e-resources, knowing full well that these resources were going to be so much in demand now that people were not able to get to our physical resources. And again, that happened so quickly with a minimum amount of friction. One of those, and again, it's one of those elements that shows how we need to do library in the future and how this particular strategic plan, while it may be thin on specifics, does have at its core a very real goal. And that is to make the library culture much more agile, much more responsive and much more ready to meet the challenges of the future.
Thank you so much. I think we've, we've sort of covered the ground on the strategic plan. Does any trustee have any questions that you'd like to direct to any of us? With that, we'll turn it right back over to the chair. It looks like the chair is unmuted now, okay. Oh. I do think, I did want to mention the, we have on the agenda the curbside plus report. Kathy, I think you covered most of that. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Since you asked, there is one thing I forgot to say. We also, last week, launched a chat feature on.
We also last week launched a chat feature on our website. So this only kind of, it's the plus part of curbside. It's something that I've actually wanted to do for a long time. But this change in our services that just gave us the opportunity to roll that out. So if you log onto our website, give it a try, a little box will come up. You've seen this on other sites and it'll say someone's ready to chat with you. And it's not going to be all the hours, 24 hours, of course. It's going to be the hours that we have staff available. But we do have staff during most hours covering it. I've tried it a couple of times and someone has answered right away. So just give it a try. Just say, hey, I'm here. I want to see how this works. And I think you'll be pleased. And I think our customers will really like it because they can quickly get answers to their questions. We still have email librarian. We still have social media, but this is just one more way customers can quickly get the help that they need. So other than that, I think I covered it in the other section.
Well.
So Will, Will just, he got dropped off and so he is calling back in. I think what I'll do is, I think I know, I know he wanted to talk about communications with the media policy. So let me skip over that and because COVID round tree today is traveling to a wedding down in North Carolina. I'm going to talk about the, the motion to approve reclassifications. Let me pull that. Actually, that is, that is a fairly straightforward motion that we would like to ask the board to approve a, a, moving a circulation assistant position to a library associate position. I'll, I'll just ask for a motion for that.
I still move.
Second.
Okay, Donna, I think you picked up who moved and seconded, I hope. So. I think I would like to ask Joyce Miller to take over while Will is trying to, trying to get back reconnected to this, to this meeting. Can you take over to call for the vote or call for discussion?
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Again, I know this must be really frustrating for Will. Will, are you in at all? I see you're looking as though you're in, but you're muted, but.
No, it's just the joys of online meetings.
Yeah, yeah, definitely the joy of it. Okay, so Will, what, what we did was we just skipped over the communications with the media policy and Joyce took the vote on approving the reclassification. So that has happened. So if you want to just speak to the communications with the media policy.
Yeah, so as always, Joyce, thank you for always catching my slack. With the communications with the media policy, it is on first reading and pretty much, it was a policy that came out when Kevin Best was canceled, but he was also a part. At the time, he did raise the point that we should develop a media policy. And it did take us some time to do, to develop a policy. So Christine Feldman did draft a policy for us to consider and I will turn it over to Christine to explain the policy since she was the one who drafted it. So the Feldman?
Sure. Thanks, Will. So as, as Will mentioned, Kevin advised us that we should have a policy for who, best practice wise, who should be speaking to the press. And specifically it addresses staff and the board and makes the recommendation that all media inquiries go through the office of marketing and communications as well as the, the chief executive officer and in consultation with the director of marketing and communications and the chief of the board chair, it would also be a part of that conversation for message consistency. It, it doesn't go into a lot more detail than that other than to say that if people make statements to the media on other issues, that they need to make it clear that they are not doing so as a board member or a staff member, but on their, as their own private citizen and I'm happy to answer questions. We did, I, I will mention that Skip and I did a lot of research for other library systems, both locally and nationally about such policies. Most have sort of unwritten policies that all media inquiries go through the office of communications. Very few had, had written policies, but those that did were very similar to what we're bringing to you today.
And since this is on first reading, I would ask the body if they can send Christine the minutes because keep in mind, we have to move to closed session. If we can send Christine our questions and then come back to it, unless Joan, you really have to ask a question.
One, one point here since, and I totally agree with what you're doing so far. And you say this is first reading, but make sure that we run this by our council before it comes up for final move, please.
It has been, I believe, run by council. I believe, Will, do you want to say anything else about that?
With that, and we'll, we'll keep that point in mind, Joan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, please forward comments or questions to Christine. Skip has a quick point he wants to bring up with the staff report.
Yeah, I do have Rudy who wants to make a report on capital projects. And I also want to mention that I, I just today sent out a sole source procurement list to, to the board. Donna sent that out a little earlier. That lists quite a lot of sole source contracting that we do. We, we pretty well use, I think we use 12 separate contracts for materials management. The highest one is a contract for up to $900,000 that we spend with overdrive. So that's where we get most of our ebooks and on the, so materials management has those 12. There are three in IT that we have and the, the highest cost on that one is around $275,000 for Cersei Dynex, which is our integrated library system, which controls our, our database of, of both materials and customers, our circulation system and, and many other modules of that. But you'll have that and be able to peruse it at your leisure later. I just did not get it to you until today. So wanted to mention that. With that, I'd like to, to turn to Rudy and I do see Donna is stating, is raising her hand.
I just wanted to point out that there were two position classification documents. We've only covered one.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the second one?
You have it in your meeting packet.
Did we do the circulation assistant to the library associate?
Yeah, that's the one that I am seeing. Oh, yeah. Okay.
So we didn't do the approval of the finance specialist to grade?
Yeah, I, I was, I was under the impression, the, the board already approved a reclassification back in April for the finance specialist too, but we did not approve the grade. So this is going to a, a grade 17 in our general system. So I didn't know that we needed to bring that to the board, but since you have it, there, there it is. And I'll ask for someone to motion and will you take it from here?
What, before we dive back into this, Skip, is there anyone left on your staff you want to speak before?
Yes, I was getting ready to turn it over to Rudy.
Yeah, turn it over to your staff, then we'll come back to this. Let's handle one thing at a time.
Okay, Rudy?
Handle, handle it over to your staff and then we'll come back to this.
Yes, Rudy?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Marybel Abraham will give us a quick update on the capital projects.
I'm coming, everyone. Good evening. This is Marybel Abraham. Thank you, Rudy, and thank you, Mr. Chair and all members of the Board of Trustees. I know I only have a few minutes and I wanted to present at least a few highlights. While COVID has tried to undermine us from a facility, from a facility standpoint, it's been a banner year for us. And I'm going to give you a very quick update on three projects that we completed this year. Discoveries, the library at the mall, Rivera Beach Library and the Severn renovation. And hopefully you can all see my slide as I present. Okay, so this is the before picture of discoveries, which we occupied in 2018. And this is the new discoveries, which we occupied this year in 2020. As you can see, the library is about triple the size. We have a new meeting room and a community pantry that will be available to the community. We also have a small conference room and a very expansive story timer. We also have a maker space in the teens area. So these are beautiful amenities that we did not have in the original mall. This picture is a before picture of the Rivera Beach temporary space, which we were able to procure with the help of county real estate. And this is how it looks occupied now. Again, we're really excited because we were able to occupy this and have a seamless, well, relatively seamless transition from moving to a building that is going to be demolished and to provide service for customers. So that's one thing the community wanted and we're really excited about that. In addition, we have $2.5 million that was awarded in Maryland State Library Grants from the Capital Grants Program. And we're also requesting another million dollars for this year. We'll know more about that in January. We're hoping to open Rivera Beach's new location, which will be on the existing site with a new building, approximately 20,000 square feet in spring of 2022. And again, the community is thrilled that we've moved next door to Garris Beck's Food Store, a longtime local community business, which is revered. The location is very close and it's just been a very happy arrangement. Lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about Severn Library. This is a before picture of the traditional Severn Library and this is our after picture. So beautiful interior and what's really nice is that we now have new meeting spaces and study spaces. We have a new cafe. We have new lobby doors and carpeting throughout the whole public space area. In addition, we still have the exterior renovation to look forward to. So I thought I'd share a few design renderings about that. The current location or the current picture is the existing location as it looks now. And this is the design rendering from our graphic arts vendor that is designing this project for us. This next picture is a rear of the Severna Park Library, which is what you would see if you were on Ridge Road. And this is the design rendering of the new enhanced exterior. So we're really excited about the progress of this. We anticipate this project being completed in FY '21. And I'm now available for questions.
Marybel?
Thank you. Joan?
Welcome. Thank you. Yes.
One question. Is the mall currently open? I mean, for, I'm curious.
Yes, the mall actually, mall actually opened in February of 2020 and it is now fully functional, as is the rest of the system. So they are doing the curbside plus service and they are doing the appointment only service. There have been a few times we do have to follow the access of the stores. Meaning if the stores close, if the mall closes, we'd have to close. But generally, they've been more accessible and so we've had no problem staying open. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rudy. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. We will go back to the one resolution that we forgot to vote on. And that is the resolution to approve the reclassification for financial specialist number two grade. I will hear a motion to approve the reclassification. Motion by Joan, is there a second? Jenny Lane, seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand or like function. All those oppose? None. The resolution is approved unanimously. Now, moving on to extending the strategic plan by one year. As everyone knows, we, when the board approved our current strategic plan, it runs to strategic to the year 2022. With all of the barriers that have occurred over the past couple of years, it's been challenging for staff to really dive deep into the heavy lifting to really fully implement the strategic plan. And particularly with COVID, it makes it really challenge, challenging to really implement it to its fullest extent. With the recommendation of the staff and the conversations that I've had with staff, I would like to recommend to the board that we extend our current strategic, our strategic plan to year 2023 to give ourselves more time to wrap our hands around the strategic plan, to see it fully implemented and give our staff more time to work on it. Are there any questions or concerns before we vote on it? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to extend the strategic year to year 2023?
I still move.
Joyce moves. Is there a second? Jenny Lane, seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those again? Hearing none, the strategic plan has been extended to year 2023. Moving on to, to entering into a contract with governance and management consultant. You guys should have received in your packets information about Maureen Sullivan. Let me pull up her information real quick.
Will, may I just?
The information should be, I'm sorry?
I said, I, I would like to just make one kind of a correction to that document that we sent out where it talks about the preparation stage and there's an item number four where it says meet with Skip Ald to finalize the plan. It's, it should read meet with Skip Ald and Will Shorter. I just wanted to be real clear about that, that this would, that's really, that's where that would get started.
And let me give some more context. And the reason why I am bringing this proposal to the board. As you know, with the board and we have a lot of members who have been around longer and we have a lot of new board members. And I think it's a really good time that we take a comprehensive review of our governing documents, policies and responsibilities of the different responsibilities that are in the court of the CEO and of the trustees and other relevant operating policies and procedures. I think it's also healthy that we review the current organizational structure and work design to ensure that the long-term strategic viability of our system is, is well-functioned, especially as we're coming out of the COVID pandemic. In short, we, we really only have one policy, although there's other numerous policies that really dictate different governance. But one thing that I noticed that was really concrete was the one that Kevin Best offered when I first joined the board. And that was very all-encompassing, but I think it'll be really good to take a very comprehensive and in-depth look into our governing processes and looking at how we can make our governance and management stronger. And also the only other thing that offers us guidance is state statute that governs Maryland libraries. Also, within the work plan that Maureen Sullivan gave us, Also, within the work plan that Maureen Sullivan gave us, and let me just say, Maureen Sullivan, the reason why we, meaning we, Skip and I approached Maureen to bring this proposal to you is because Maureen Sullivan has rich experience with working with library boards and working with libraries in this area and working on governance issues and organizational development issues and strengthening systems. So we thought her experiences were top-notch. And we thought what she can offer was something that would be extraordinary, especially for the price. We thought that the organizational climate survey for all staff and the inclusion of the Board of Trustees, executive leadership team, and members of the Strategic Plan Working Group and Foundation Board of Directors would be very well encompassing to help us strengthen our process. And overall, it gives us a sense of recommendations to go off of. And also, I just think that this is something that can be forward-looking as we are trying to move out of COVID and as we're acclimating to a smaller board and with new members joining in, coexisting with members who have been on the board for a while, as I previously said. Before I enter my motion, does anyone have any initial impressions or any questions? I don't see anyone's hand. So I would like to motion to authorize the chairman and the CEO to enter into a contract that stipulates that stipulates what's outlined in the work plan that was presented by Maureen Sullivan and to enter into a contract to pay her up to a salary of $13,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Joan, seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. And now we are moving to closed session. So I will read the closed session statement. The Maryland Open Means Act permits public bodies to go into closed session under certain issues. We are going into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personal matters that affects one or more specific individuals and to protect the privacy or reputation of individuals concerning a matter not related to public business and to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
I still move.
Joyce makes the motion. Is there a second? Jenny Lane, seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I need to see everyone's hands because it complies with the Maryland Open Means Act. All those against? We are in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'm about to send the invitation to the breakout room.
Okay.
And if the trustees will please join the meeting in the breakout room and I'll remain in the main session until the session's closed.
Hey Rudy, are you there?
Yes, and we're still broadcasting.
Okay, okay.
If you, the chat window is open if you want to talk there.
Okay, thanks.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right, with, has everyone made it through?
I don't know.
Sorry, just wait on one more, just a moment.
Just one more, okay.
Tommy is not back yet.
Throw him out of the room?
Everyone else is out of the room, yes.
All right, we are now in open session, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Without objection, we are in adjournment. Take care everyone.
Bye.